Hello and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 13th, 2023. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start with open forum. Is anybody here for open forum? All right, then I will close open forum. Our appointment with Plymouth County Retirement is going to be on the 27th, so we can go right to action items. Mr. Spigone.
Got it. Prove the minutes of the October 30th, 2023 Board of Selectings meeting. Select.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion and vote on applications submitted for expenditures for the American Funds Plan Act.
Second.
Second for the purposes of discussion.
Right.
Okay. How do you want to...
I think we just go through one at a time, if you guys...
Yeah.
I mean, there's not many.
That works for me.
Right, and kind of just figure out where we're at.
All right, electronic signage for Town Hall.
Motion to approve.
Yep, you want to just make motions and then I'll second or whatever.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Discussion on that one?
Just, you know, I don't know if the board wants to... I don't want to say place restrictions, but we've had this discussion before that the idea, at least for the one here at Town Hall, is we open it up as much as possible.
Yes.
Obviously, the DPW LED signs that we use over at the Common, it's basically limited to one message at a time in the sense of, you know, for instance, we had the Veterans Day Parade sign up. We weren't giving notice about anything else except that. With these signs, you can have as many as you want in the rotation, which means that we're not limited to just doing one each week.
Right.
Or something like that. So, we are going to encourage, obviously, town departments, but also we want community groups to be able to use that sign. Would the town... We have other signs that are being requested, we can get to those and talk to those.
Right.
But that's the intention of this one.
But the one here definitely would be for town and community events.
Correct.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sidewalks on Union Street, I think we don't know enough, right?
No, I'd like motion to pass that over at this time.
There's concern that it's not enough money, maybe?
Well, not only that, but I've talked to John Haynes today, and, you know, I think one of the concerns he has as well is, you know, kind of figuring out where it is that we want to put these funds. Obviously, they're one-time expenditure, there's a lot of things, we've got new accepted roads that we've been talking about. So, I think as much as this is needed and as good as it could be for the community, I think that, as David said, we table it and really just take a look at the bigger picture. And we may have other monies there that are able to be expended in this area, because to me, this really fits kind of the criteria, as Melanie had said to us a couple of weeks ago, to what we're looking to do as far as what the, I guess, this money is planned for, right? Those expenditures to fix things for a one-time expense as we go forward, but again, like David said...
And again, and how many people, okay, are going to benefit by using that aspect, because it's not all Union Street, it's only down to Earl Lane, I believe.
Okay.
You know, it might be a case where we look at that, maybe bring it down to Hobart, but let's take some time to...
Take a look at that one.
Okay. The economic impact from Kay's Trucking, I think we were going to pass over on that one as well. They were going to go back to ARPA, somebody said?
Yes.
Satcham Rock and Bennett Safety Improvement Plan.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Pavilion, this is the, at the center at Satcham Rock.
I'd like to make a motion on that, that we allocate $60,000 for engineering and architectural on that, to have them take a look at that entire property down there and let's come up with some different ideas on location. There are some other buildings that can be put up that don't require as much permanent footings and stuff like that, so this will give them an opportunity to take a look at the entire project, even, I think originally, they said, "Let's place it to the right of the community garden." Well, maybe that's not the best, but let's take a look at it. But this will give them a step in the right direction, to take a look at the whole project.
Yeah, I agree. Schematics has to be done either way.
And we think 60 is enough?
Yeah, it's usually around, for engineering and stuff like that, it's usually around a 10% factor.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds like a good idea to me. I know John Haynes has some different ideas about...
Right.
What can be done, too, so... Did you want to make that in the most... Yes, all right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Off-site backup system for the towns and the schools, this is the server backup.
Motion to approve.
Yep, second.
Yeah, I agree. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The budgeting software.
This was taken off, right, Charlie? And this was...
Well, I think you do a passover on this.
We're going to not, yeah. And the premium pay?
I made a passover.
We need more information on that. The foul ball netting at Strong's Field.
Make a motion to approve.
Uh, yeah, I'll...
Oh, we can pass over, I mean.
Yeah, I'll second for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, as much as this would benefit that neighborhood, it is a very specific request for a very small amount of people, and if we're trying to do things for the town as a whole, that one's a tougher sell.
I think one of the problems being down at Strong Field is, I understand that the purpose of it, not what they're trying to do, but I don't think that proposal would work. That might stop some foul balls from going over there, but the ones that ended out on a property, unless you folded over some kind of a netting on top, that would stop half the foul balls from being foul balls that just hit the net, I just...
It would be like Florida and have one of those, like, enclosed swimming pools.
Right, right, same idea. Yeah, I sat in on a meeting with the Recreation Department a month ago regarding this, and they had the same, mostly John Shea, had the same response that, you know, we're not sure that this would solve what the problem is that this was originally intended for, so, you know, we can certainly, through Rec, figure out what has to be done from them and then get that response back from them.
So, it'll be a passover.
Okay. Church Street Shed Repairs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Church Street Lighting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The scoreboard at Strong's Field.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Leland Farms feasibility study.
Motion to approve.
Second for discussion?
It's about time.
What's, so, do you want to discuss?
Yeah, what is, what do we...
He said it's about time.
Right. We've been talking about what to do with that property forever.
Besides fesen hunting.
This is the first time anyone's come forth to sit there and say, "Can this be used for events?"
Yep.
And again, you know, we can talk about sporting events, we can talk about, you know, we talked about Robin's Farm before, about putting some kind of pavilion down there for entertainment, stuff like that. And this is what the feasibility, I would hope, would cover all aspects of what that field could be used for.
Right. Charlie, do you remember, who was this proposed, I mean, who was this...
I think it's Recreation.
Recreation, too? Okay. Yeah, I mean, there's been a couple down, I think, wasn't the school originally looked at, the high school was for an area down there, so, you know, I'm assuming that's, and I agree with you, something should be done for that area. There's been talk since, geez, probably the 80s, about different projects that could work down there. So, I agree with it, I just kind of wanted to get an idea of what, who was pushing the agenda, but it's good.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The roof replacement for the youth sports building.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The purchase of land on Robin Street, we're not, just, it's not even an option. Inclusive playground equipment.
For discussion on this one, with the conversation we've been having with the Central School being under, you know, a committee to see what we're going to do with that building, if we approve the inclusive playground equipment, I think we have to do something where, when it is placed there, if we're moving, we are, that would be set up to move it to a new school, or make sure that if something goes wrong with the expansion, maybe going out into that area type of a deal, that we don't lose the money we're paying for this equipment.
Yeah.
That it's somewhere, it has to be set up so it can be relocated if we have to.
I spoke to John Shea about that last week after the Central School Building Committee meeting, and, you know, he assured me that, you know, if we approved it, anything that they did, you know, would be able to be moved or repurposed.
And again, I'll make a motion to approve based on the fact that it's...
He was saying it's really necessary, that some of those kids have no recreation at all.
Absolutely.
To the different situations, so, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. High school baseball field backstop and netting. That thing's expensive. Jeez.
Motion to approve.
Second.
What do they make the netting out of?
I don't know, it better work.
Either silk.
Yeah, right, it's silkworms. Any discussion on this?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pickup truck.
I thought we already did the pickup.
Yeah, I think it's already been purchased, right? Isn't it?
No, it was kicked back. ARPA did not recommend, I don't, I don't think at this point that the schools, they don't expect it.
We'll pass it over.
Yep, all right. The turf installation at the softball field, that, on this says it's on hold?
Yeah, so this, I got asked a little bit about this inquiry, because when I first read it, I was, you know, turf, I'm like, what kind of turf we're doing? But this is actually drainage for that, for those two fields, again...
Those are the ones out front here, right?
Out front here, yeah. Kind of back to what David had said earlier, with the proposal of the Central School potentially being done, we're not sure where that drainage would go or how it would work with a new building or no building or whatever. I mean, it certainly went out there, I can tell you, Chief can tell you as well, as he's playing softball on it a few weeks ago, but...
Didn't help his game at all.
Right.
I already did really well.
He did do well, actually.
If you ask him.
So, I think we could, we can certainly hold off on this for our table.
Yeah, pass it over at this point, based on what's going to happen with the Central School.
Okay.
But what we have to look at, the stuff we're passing over, Charlie, we have until the end of next year to approve, and they have to be finalized by the year after.
December 31st.
Calendar year, so, 2024, okay.
And then they have to be finished by 2026?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Mitchell and Central Security Enhancement.
Again, I'd motion for the Mitchell School Security Enhancement, I think we'd be holding off on the Central's security based on the fact that we're going to put in a security system that may not be in that building anymore.
This one's a tough one.
I know.
You know, because I don't know, and maybe, Chief, I don't know, if you have any information regarding what they're actually requesting as far as the safety equipment? All right, you know, maybe table this, just to get a little bit more information. When is ARPA meeting again? Are they meet next week?
Tomorrow.
Okay, well, perfect. So, let's get that on the agenda to see what their, where that becomes.
I mean, I think it's a necessary thing, but I agree, I'd like to know a little bit more about what that money covers.
Yep, well, and also, as you just did with the playground equipment, it's not even necessary that we move out of Central, but if we're going to do a major renovation for Central, how is that going to interact with security equipment that we've installed? Is that, in essence, something that's just going to have to be torn out?
Because it would be, any new building or renovation, I would think that would be inclusive in that process anyway, the world that we live in now, so, okay. The snow blowers and salt spreaders?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have the electronic signs for Central and Mitchell.
Again, for Central, I, again, we should be passed over regardless of what they do renovations or otherwise, they should be included in that as part of their renovations, if they want to put a sign up.
I would think it would be part of that, and also, though, like, Central is so close to Town Hall, do we need one there and one there? There might be better locations in the future, maybe like the fire station, so we have something on Route 18 or...
Fire station, library, something like that.
The library.
You know, so, we may look at that.
But you have that beautiful sign at the library, so, you know. Not that I had anything to do with that at the time.
And the same with the, you know, the Mitchell School there, you know, the Town Hall's going to have all that information available to all the schools, communities. The school has the two electronic signs already on both sides of the high school, so I, I'm not too sure we need another one down there.
I, me and him are going to disagree on this one. I think the Mitchell School, being so that it's down, I think, away from the area a little bit, and the school is designed a little differently with the age group that's in there, it's kind of a group, I think, that doesn't necessarily get, need the information that comes from Central or the high school. You know, I would think that, at the very least, maybe we just, we let them discuss a little bit more what they're looking to use that sign down there for, you know, if it's just school events and Mitchell, is it more oriented to that age group down there? It's just, I don't know, I feel like that age group kind of gets pushed aside a little bit, you know, and, I mean, I think that that's why they're looking to kind of get something in place to talk about what's happening down there. It's got nothing to do with my child being down there, of course, but...
It has everything to do with your child being down there.
I don't know, I live next door, are those lights going to be really...
Well, that's...
They're going to keep you awake all night.
They're going to screw up with our circadian rhythms. And I talked to John Shea about this, too, because the price was higher.
Yeah, right.
He was saying, and I think we could kick it back to them for maybe some different alternatives on those prices, because I think this included, like, a lot of stonework and stuff that maybe isn't, you know, fully necessary, and so maybe it could be done for less if it wasn't as fancy an installation.
All right, so, we'll pass it over for future.
Let's get more info on that one, yeah.
One of the things that we have to keep in mind about everything that we have down here, everything that's been approved, everything that's, you know, being tabled for future approval, is these costs were given to us a year ago, or they were put together a year, a year and a half ago. You know, we have to, at some point, did they plan in for inflation when they put these together? And are we undercutting everything on here, you know, based on the information that we were approving today? And we'll have to get that through whoever put the figures together for the ARPA committee.
Yep. And some of it is Plymouth County eligible as well.
Right.
Yeah, and, you know, and I think people might say, "We approved a lot that we request from Recreation," dealing with Recreation, but I feel like that's a really appropriate thing, that this money is supposed to cover, you know, a lot of people in town, it's supposed to be that idea of mitigating the effects of a pandemic, that these are things that everybody can benefit from. Outdoor Recreation, you know, became such a lifeline for so many people, so I think anything we can do, and I think we can probably all agree that Recreation is something that we have, you know, consistently underfunded, so this is an opportunity to bring some things, you know, up to date.
We're not going to see this money again, so now's the time to do it.
No. I don't want to live through an event that would cause them to give us this kind of money ever again, thank you, so, okay?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, good discussion.
Okay, moving on, approve the sign, approve and sign intermunicipal agreement for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant between the town of Halifax and the towns of Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Middle Bar, and Rainham.
Jean Marie, can you come up?
Can you explain that?
Come on up.
Hold up, please.
Yes.
Do we get enough of that noise? We're actually in this group, it was started two years ago after COVID hit, because the state recognized that a lot of towns, like East Bridgewater, only had one or two people in that position. So, we have a full-time health agent and a shower-wake nurse, and that's who is taking care of things during COVID. So, they're trying to build in, which they had 35 or 40 years ago, they had regional health people that would come in and do housing, do food inspections, help you if you had an outbreak, and now they're getting back to that. So, we have these six towns that have banded together, and DPH has given us grants to do it. We also have little things, like we're moving from paper to electronics for inspections.
How about that?
I'm still playing with it, I only cut it about a week ago, and trying to do that. I mean, I do probably about 210, 230 food inspections a year, each establishment is visited at least twice. We have 35 food trucks now that are permitted in town, so we do a lot of that, and that's just in... Yeah, so, housing, housing usually typically is done by a health agent or a single person. We are unfortunately living in an age where it's not always very comfortable to go out to someone's house, that you don't know, that may not speak your language by yourself. So, we're now teaming up, the health agents are teaming up and going out, just for safety's sake, basically, both of us. So, we have a housing inspector that will do that, and then they're going to have a public health nurse if we have to give out clinics where you're expecting 100 to 300 of the whole town. You now have six towns and a regional one to help. We used them this summer when I was out on medical leave, they covered my inspections. The other Board of Health agents covered my inspections, and I have done it for other towns for the same reason. So, it's cooperative that you know how people work, that you work with them in a group on a pretty consistent basis, and that's what that agreement's about.
Good.
And the Board of Health's already approved it, just so that you know that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, no, I just think it's, we've been talking about it a long time, my days in the Board of Health, talking about trying to, we actually met with East Bridgewater and East Bridgewater about the nursing services and trying to, you know, regionalize some of the stuff as well, so, you know, to see something like this is great. Is this the same group that I know Rob had met when they were working out the details with the commercial club to bring back the individuals?
Yes.
To do the chila-chowder event?
Yeah, and they cover, when we, we have what they call a food truck rodeo, where 30 to 40 food trucks will be there, and we send out the regional inspector, and then all that inspections are used for when they come into our town.
Yep.
And the same thing with the commercial club, where it has a number of people out there.
Yeah, well, they came out with a great solution, and I think it was, it was nice to see that. The information was spread not only from East Bridgewater, but from other towns that came up with discussions on things they had done, and I think it was what, a checklist or something that had to be...
Well, that actually came Department of Public Health, and we're supposed to use it, but we, it wasn't in our files, we didn't know about it. Department of Public Health is now making everything electronic, and we, for instance, we have to tell them how many camps we have, how many times they're inspected, complaints, those records have to be sent to DPH on an annual basis. And now we're just basically making sure we all do it the same way.
That's great.
Sounds like it will be a good way of reducing some redundancy, that, you know, everybody has to do it. Great, questions, Dave?
No, actually, that the family day we had for the Bison Tending, I went to the commercial, but I met the regional inspector, and she was great, she explained exactly everything that was going on there, so, did a great job.
Good. Okay.
Need to form that in a motion from the Board?
Yeah, I move to approve the intermunicipal agreement.
I stated.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving, we're not...
We're going to skip number four.
We're not doing the fire, no.
All right, discussion and vote on the EDA Grant Administrative Agreement with Old Colony Planning Council.
So, this was a present, this is part of the EDA, the $3 million grant we got from the federal government, Economic Development Administration. OCPC would be the designated grant administrator, that doesn't mean they're running the entire project, what they're doing is doing the grant, the administration of the grant itself, not of the project. So, for instance, Western Sampson's engine handles the engineering, they'll handle most of the bidding requirements and things, what OCPC will make sure that whatever we're doing with the bidding meets the standards that are set by the federal government, as an example. They'll handle the, any monthly or quarterly reporting that we have to do to EDA, things like that. There's $65,000 set aside specifically in the $3 million grant listed in the budget that we got from this, Federals, so it's not our money that's going to this, it's through the state for that. Since OCPC is a state entity, we do not have to go out to bid, we're just going to, we have people there, such as Don Sullivan, who have experience with EDA grant administration, so we have people who know what, how to handle this whole thing, it won't be a situation that John Haynes or myself has to start from scratch and learn how to do this, along with whatever else we're supposed to be doing. This is what, you know, this is what they're supposed to be doing, so, I'm certainly recommending. We had a meeting with them, with OCPC staff this morning, I made a few minor revisions in the agreement based on that, I sent a copy to Don Sullivan, he's indicated he's fine with that. It's not changing their duties, just clarifying, so, for instance, it says that, in fact, they'll bill us on a monthly basis, as an example, there wasn't, that wasn't clear in the original verbiage, so I'm certainly recommending the Board approve this.
Okay. I already signed it.
Right, well...
Oh, boy.
Oh.
Rebecca told me to.
Well, Rebecca wasn't aware that we were going to make, I was going to make amendments to it, so...
Okay.
So, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, make a motion to appoint the members to the Public Safety Building Committee, in order here, Fire Chief Tim Herron, a non-voting position, Police Chief Michael Jenkins, non-voting position, Police Department Representative Sergeant Alton Bosson, Fire Department Representative Captain Jeff Kelly, DPW Facilities Brian Kylie, Finance Committee Karen Gilman, Capital Planning Committee Dave Foley, and Planning Board Kevin Reilly.
Second.
And just a note that we will appoint at-large members from the community at a later date in 2023. Are we doing it later because nobody came forward, or because we...
We just had the deadline for submission of applications, it was last Thursday, I believe, the chiefs are going to be, and maybe some of the members who are being appointed tonight can do the interviews and such during the next two weeks, make recommendations to the Board in time for the meeting on the 27th, we'll ask those three people who the chiefs are recommending to come into that meeting.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
How many requests do we have, do you know?
I think it was 10 or 12.
Oh, good.
Good, you have 10.
That's great.
Fantastic.
Okay. Did you second?
I did.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss and vote on request from National Grid for the town to take over payment of street light located on Patriot Circle.
You're going to second that?
Yep.
Who's going to explain this one?
Chief.
Chief, or you, Charlie?
Well, simply, I mean...
Taking the point.
We did the, you know, we did the usual request for recommendations, and Chief Jenkins did have a sergeant go out to take a look at the location, but he, and then he said that it's because it's a decorative light utilizing underground power in front of three Patriot Circle. Obviously, the decorative lights are different in principle than so much as the street lights are. I know in Halifax, we did pay, we ended up with separate bills for the decorative lights because they had been included in the planning board's plan that was approved, even though they were decorative, they weren't on streetlights, so they do provide a little bit of light to the street, but the sergeant felt the town shouldn't be obligated to pay for this. I don't think we received anything else from the fire chief, and there, I think there are pictures there...
Yep.
In your folders, or from John Haynes recommending it.
Make a motion, do we deny the request?
Do we want to deny it, or do we want to table it?
We have a recommendation from the police.
Peter, what do you think?
Okay, so, were they, they were originally, I'm going back now a little bit from the last time we talked about, they were originally installed by the developer?
Upper, and probably as part of the plan that was approved by the planning board.
Okay, and currently they aren't being turned on or paid for by...
Us, by the town.
But they are by the residents right now?
I don't even know if it's on at this point.
They're not on, that's what I was asking.
Oh, they're not even on.
Have they have them on?
That's what I...
I'd have to go out, I mean, I could go out after the meeting.
Should run down there right now.
Well, they must be on, because it says...
I know, because when he checked, it was during the evening.
The Realty Trust that initially ordered the light stopped paying, and so the resident called in, and now the light is lit, but...
I think they kept them on, but the grid's zooming, I don't think anyone's paying more right now.
Right, they're just running with a...
Oh, just keep it that way, then.
Oh, right. Don't say anybody here from National Grid.
I saw Danny personally looking at it, but my...
Yeah, I mean...
I thought it was a decorative light, so he wasn't sure, you know.
Right.
He was looking for the, you know, typical street light, so...
But if it's a decorative light, but if it's approved by planning board, then it's...
Right, it was meant to provide some illumination.
Are we splitting hairs?
Have we accepted Patriot Circle?
I'd have to go look.
Yeah, that's, that was my second...
Can you run table and we'll...
Let's come back on this one, yeah.
Yeah, let's see what the acceptance in the road was to start with.
Yeah.
And that was my second thing, and then, let's see what we've got down here. Is anybody from Patriot, what is it, Patriot Circle?
Yeah.
Nobody here from there either?
Close by.
You're close by?
There, yeah.
Yeah, I know where it is, I just didn't know if there's anyone. All right, well, let's just see what happens over there. All right. All right, get back to this here, let's see. Discussion and possible vote regarding Town Hall hours.
Go ahead, Carol, this is yours.
Why is it mine? I think it's a terrible idea, this is not mine.
We have a chart that shows...
We do.
How many people have come in over the last month.
Mm-hmm.
That's a total of 21 people, basically, for the month of October. A lot of that was for the veterans' agent, for questions and passports and so on.
Right.
Way back when, this, again, this proposal was probably twenty years ago, um, when we never had, it was always just every, oh, five days for the same. And then we changed it. Um, one of the things I thought when we did it way back when is that, you know, if we had a Monday holiday, then we'd be open until eight o'clock on Tuesday. Um, somehow that went behind the board. Don't understand how that happened. The half-hour lunch bothers me a little bit, only because I, unless everyone's going to bring their lunch here, they're not gonna be able to go out and get back and?
Well, which is one of the reasons, we, even before this came up, we've been talking about trying to get space for a break room, but it requires some capital funding and such upstairs.
You should've put in an opera request.
Spill the broom.
Uh, you know, I know, I did talk to Chris Buckley because he does do passports on Monday nights. He said he could rearrange those to may have people come in earlier if we closed at six instead of eight, and he could devote some time on Tuesday afternoons or Friday mornings.
Also, I know the town clerk's office at some?
But town clerk?
Has to be open for voter registration periods, as an example.
I mean, I don't have an issue splitting the difference on Mondays, you know, from, so it's eight now, maybe seven. And then, you know, making up the differences that way in some, some aspects. I mean, I think eight seems late to me. But six does seem a little bit early.
There's only one other town that's open till eight, right?
Right. So, I, I definitely agree with that. I think that, I, you tell me, Charlie, I mean, you're, you're, you know?
Well, I mean, the town, the real, the only advantage that's happening is for the employees.
Yep.
In the sense of the, obviously, the townspeople aren't gonna get any more service than they're getting right now because we'll be open fewer hours. The only, the town employees will get a half hour for lunch instead of an hour, but they'll be able to go home earlier on Monday night.
If, if we, like Peter said, split the difference and we went from eight to seven?
So, we'd have forty-five minute period for lunch, let's say, instead of?
Yeah, whatever those hours?
Seems a little more reasonable.
And we can open Tuesdays on holiday weeks?
I mean, I, I hear what you're saying on that, but I, I, I think the likelihood of people tracking that and remembering, like, oh, it's a Monday holiday, they're open late on Tuesday, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's?
I, I, I don't know if?
No, certainly, the, the majority of people came in between six and seven, if you look at the table.
Yeah.
Right, right.
There are a few people who come, you know?
And I also don't know that, you know, one month is, is a long enough snapshot in time. I think a quarter would, would give us more information, but, you know, we could try seven, maybe in the summer, we're not open later at all, you know?
And the other point of this is that we're not gonna make this change immediately.
Yep.
Because it's gonna be subject to any union negotiations and such. So, and I think we need to, you know, work with the department heads if we are gonna be doing this, what, as I, with Chris or with Katie or anybody else who might have to be open on a specific night, and how we're gonna handle that.
Okay.
Who's in the charge on this? Like, who do?
This came more from the, well, as far as I know, this came more from department heads.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that's who we need to go back?
It wasn't your idea.
No.
Is this who we need to go back?
He's gonna be here anyway.
Yeah, well, it's?
Because of us.
So, we need to go back?
I mean, that's gonna be another point for the departments that have meetings or boards that have meetings after seven o'clock, generally, you know?
Then we have to pay that overtime thing that we talked about, yes, see, that's?
Maybe we should be talking, since we're not gonna put this into effect right away, we should be talking about, you know, this, this group and other board and stuff, moving back their, their meetings to, to earlier, until we don't run into this situation.
Yeah, I know, but then you've got residents who work, and if they want to attend a meeting and they can't get here at five o'clock. Especially, I mean, not so much.
And those are the same residents that, you know?
Yeah.
Won't be able to come in after seven o'clock.
But like, you've got planning board, like, people go to those meetings, you know, they need to be there. I don't know. It's a sticky wicket.
Okay. Well, you've said you wanted to get more, more data, so the board could table this for sometime in the future and ask the folks who've been doing the counting to continue doing so for the next couple of months.
I mean, I, I don't love the idea of people sitting in a building and, and not providing service.
Right.
You know, that is not a good use of our resources either, but I'd be interested in seeing what we could do with seven o'clock instead of, instead of eight o'clock. That's, that's my personal opinion.
Get a feel for what?
For going forward, trying to?
Yep.
Figure out how we could implement it.
Right. Get a feel for what their, their thoughts about that, if we come back to that.
But I, I do think if we, if we start to close at seven o'clock, then I think we have to?
We have to look at those meetings.
We have to look at all, everyone that has meetings, you know, including this board.
It's a ripple.
Well, it's only, it's only gonna be crucial for Monday night meetings. If you have a board committee that's meeting the other nights of the week, it doesn't affect that either. They've got staff who's normally there or they don't. Board of Health, for instance, meets Monday nights.
Planning Board does.
Planning Board does, usually, yeah.
Board of assessors.
I don't know.
But they don't have any clerical there anyhow. They only have a department and, and the three members.
Okay, and maybe their clerical person comes in late on those days at their meeting. They don't?
That's a negotiation.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what we're trying not to?
I know.
Let me, let's get more information.
You wanna open up the contract?
And we'll talk more.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. Discussion of possible donations, objects, documents from the East Bridgewater Historical Society.
Right, so you have a letter from, um, Richard Rockwell. Let's see. Where is it? Not Richard, yeah. I'm calling you as an officer of the East Bridgewater Historical Society. Our smaller organization is all but defunct. We're looking for the best way to safeguard some of our more important historical artifacts in our collection. We're approaching today to see if we can open up a dialogue and come to our agreement in the donation of fourteen original artworks by local artist, Richard Bartlett. Uh, this art ranges from watercolors to charcoals, includes a wide range of topics. We are thinking that if we can get all these professionally framed via some sort of GoFundMe process, as the East Bridgewater High School has no, uh, funds. These could be hung somewhere in town hall, the library, the senior center, or some other locations. He also personally, I guess possesses, um, an original painting from the eighteen hundreds that is of Dr. Hector Orr, the first physician in, uh, East Bridgewater that appears to need some restoration work. He wanted to find out whether there was any interest by the town through the board, um, to receive these works.
Before Peter says no, I didn't know Dr. Orr.
You didn't know? No? Thought he was a physician.
I, I think it's a great thought. I wonder if we could, um, ask Southeastern Boat Tech if they would have, uh, people down at the school that could frame these paintings. But anything that?
It's part of the carpentry shop or something like that?
Yeah.
I hesitate to give anything to the library since they have things right now that they're trying to disseminate.
They're decluttering.
So, we don't wanna accept and then say, oh, yeah, fine, we'll take it, and then we'll just give it to this one or that one. I think we need to be?
But we have other?
Careful about that, but there are other places where things can go.
We have plenty of like walls right in this room.
Yep.
How many?
Yeah, these watercolors and acrylics are?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Plus the ones?
These are attractive. Isn't there a picture, a portrait of Dr. Orr at the library already? That's one of?
Just beside it.
Yeah.
We were suggesting the Board of Health.
Yeah, I, I thought, he looks familiar.
Yeah, I mean, I think we definitely have to, you know, do something. So, what they're asking is to raise funds to?
Well, no, they're asking us to accept the works.
Oh, just get them in?
Then, you know, they're hoping that we could find some way of, I mean, they wanted to do a GoFundMe pro, you know, thing. I mean, we can start on our own and see what?
Yeah.
What the cost might be. If, if Southeastern can do these, if there is what the cost might be, they might say finance materials might be a few hundred dollars or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, which case, so you might go to the finance committee, or we're not accepting new opera applications this time, so we're not gonna go there. But I could go to the finance committee for a reserve.
How many people are gonna be excited about the portrait of Dr. Orr?
I don't know. Do the eyes go, follow you as you walk through the room?
Well, do we want to accept them?
I think so, a hundred percent, I would.
Yes, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion and possible vote on amendment number two for engineering services from Weston and Sampson for East Bridgewater Bronx Sore Connection.
And this is to continue the work, um, that Weston Sampson's been doing. This would bring us up to the bidding, um, portion of the project. We're not there yet. Um, with the EDA grant, um, the, it appears we're gonna have to, we have to get, you know, to jump over more hurdles. It's nice having the money, but their money, their rules, so we're having to get more check-offs with them. It's gonna be taking a little bit longer than we would've liked to.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
No additional action items?
Was there any extra?
No. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Announcement, staff reports. Lee, anything?
Not tonight.
Thank you. Charlie, Town Administrator report. You're gonna steal my thunder and report on the central school?
You go, no, you're there to?
Oh, you do it. We can take turns.
Sure. I want us, I think the major thing is we, to let the townspeople, we, the central school, um, Central Elementary School building thing does exist. It is meeting. There is, however, a limit to what we can be doing right now. The reason is that because we're, again, you know, talking with the feds, as an example, with the sanitary sewer project, with, working with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, their money, their rules, which means we cannot, for instance, go out and hire anybody such as a owner's project manager or a design firm or architectural firm until we have the approvals necessary from the state. That won't happen until the very end of February. Um, we're scheduled to be heard on February twenty-eighth for approval to get to the next stage of the project that would allow us to start that, but we can't even advertise, we can't do anything. So, I think, you know, the group is maybe taking, look, taking tours of other buildings that are going up right now, talking with other building committees in the area that are working with various projects, get a better feel of, you know, what should we be looking for, what are the questions we should be asking, what are you building as part of your building that we should be thinking about when we're thinking about our own building, as an example? We wanna get, you know, as much information out to the public as possible, but if anybody's saying, well, why haven't they, why isn't the building up already? We're waiting for the approvals because more than half of the money for this project would be funded from the state. So, um, we're having to wait, it's sort of like a hurry up and wait. We actually got everything in much earlier than the ultimate deadline. The deadline we had to have everything done, like the funding source from the town meeting, was the end of next month, end of December. But the way they play it is you will wait until we tell you it's okay to go, so.
We did establish subcommittees at our last meeting, um, one for, um, the group that will hire the OPM to do the interviews and, and bring recommendations to the whole committee, um, and we established a communications committee and?
Was it touring?
I think there was three. I thought there were three subcommittees.
Well, it was communication, as you said, there's the, maybe the touring?
The what?
Touring.
Touring, yes, a, a committee that would set up when it's appropriate tours at the central school or going through, maybe having EB Cam go in and, and film so that people can see the condition of the school and understand the importance of the project and all of that. So, we're doing that kind of groundwork at this point, but there's really nothing else we can do, so. But we also all made a pact to make sure that we shared that information so that people see that it's transparent and they know what's going on. Because, as you know, government is so, really?
Peter didn't know that?
Peter, he knows it now.
We sure do.
He didn't, he didn't know it before, but he knows now. Anything else?
I'm not, no, I have a few brief things for the executive session. I mean, by brief, I don't think, we should be in and out in five minutes.
Love it. All right, board discussions. David?
I just wanna thank everyone that was involved in the Veterans Day Parade. It was absolutely terrific. The dedication of the plaque for Bob McCarthy, um, it's, and again, I question where, when they put the plaque up, why they put it where they did. But then when Chuck and me was talking about it, it's facing everything that Bob McCarthy did. Church, town hall, the schools, the Veterans Monument, and what a perfect place for the family. I talked to them afterwards. I couldn't thank the town enough for remembering what Bob had done, and, uh, it's, it's, it was just great for the town.
It was a good day.
It was a great day.
The pace of the parade was a little fast. Whoever's like leading at the Christmas parade in, in two weeks, they need to go. David and I, we were huffing. Well, you were. Coming up Hot Break Hill there at the cemetery, you know?
I was in the parade?
We were.
I wanna know why then the chiefs get to drive the cars and you don't get?
I know, yeah.
Actually, I?
Well, he was doing the Spartan race, and now he's gone, so we can't ask him how. He had to save his, his stamina for the Spartan race later that afternoon at Fenway.
They did ask us if we wanted to drive in either one of the chief's vehicles, and we did have an opportunity to drive in a vet.
Only one of us could go in the Corvette, though.
Well, you could put your head out, out one of the windows on the fire trucks.
What's that?
Great program at the Y, you could get in shape before the Christmas parade.
I, yeah, I don't think I have time to quite keep up. I'm telling you, we were jogging. Okay, maybe not jogging. It was fast.
We were, we were better than PETA.
It was fast. The bicentennial, well, Peter was home drinking coffee.
I was, I was working the, I was there, I was working the crowd.
Oh, yeah.
I wanna make sure everybody was having a good time.
All right. Peter, anything?
Nope.
Well, yeah, it was a wonderful turnout, both for our, our participants from East Bridgewater in the parade, but also the spectators. I mean, and people stayed for the ceremonies also. That was great, too. I mean, one of the challenges is always, if you have a parade and the ceremonies is everybody then, lots of people go home. And lots of people didn't go home this time, so.
Yeah, it was interesting, too, 'cause, you know, the Christmas parade, the parade route's pretty steady with people, right? All the way up Spring Street. And this one, I kept thinking, gee, the turnout is really low, there's just not, but it's because they were all up close to the common because they all wanted to stay for the exercises after which, which was, it was really nice to see.
I think the military vehicles on the common had a lot to do with that. It gave the kids something to do.
Yeah, it was a good day, so thank you to everybody that planned and participated.
And, you know, to, to the point, I thought Alan and, and Chuck, you know, talking about Mr. McCarthy really hit all the key points, too.
They did.
It was very touching.
It was nice, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else from you?
Nope.
Nope, nothing from me. Uh, we are going to executive, we're not coming back.
No.
We're not coming back, Zach. Oh, yes, Mr. Whitefellow?
Did you put off the conversation or work tonight about the East Street problem?
November twenty-seventh.
Well, I mean, that's why we did, we asked for any comments on the public forum.
I thought it was the thirteenth, then the twenty-seventh.
But?
Well, that's why I asked open forum, but if you wanna say something now, you can.
I'll follow by what the email I got this week.
Well, the, the email encouraged people to attend and speak at the public forum, which was right at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, I didn't.
Sorry, um, but we can, we can do that. I can open, open forum back up if you wanna say anything. We wanted to wait till the twenty-seventh to give people more time. We've heard from some people on both sides, so we just thought, let's give it a little?
Question, who makes that final decision?
Well, for the town, the board does. Ultimately, it will be the state that makes the final decision because, both because we're involving Bridgewater and East Bridgewater, but also any decision, even if it's not a state road, that deals with a truck exclusion has to be finally, finally approved at MassDOT.
Yeah, they know I'm waiting for one to get back from the state housing and climate district.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I just saw the thirteenth, and I said, oh, wow, I didn't know they were working on this.
Yeah, no, thank you. Jim, did you wanna, did you have anything you wanted to add or ask?
Well, I can save till the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
I'll be, I'll be glad to do it.
Or you can, if you wanna send anything in email, too, that's fine, or anybody that's watching. You know, you can email Charlie, you can email one of us so that we have all of that to, to, to consider.
Anybody else on the subject, or?
And this was pushed by Bridgewater?
Yes, Bridgewater came to us, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm here for the same issue, but I, uh, I was, I didn't, I was unaware of, uh, what the public forum, I haven't really been to one of these meetings before, so?
Sure.
Kinda just, well, I guess one of those people popping up because I feel like I'm being affected, which isn't always, um, respectable sometimes. But, you know, uh, had I known it was for the public forum for that, I, I probably would've spoke up. But if, uh, nothing's gonna be decided, then I, I guess we can come, um, more discussed at least. We can come back on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
And, you know, when we do the public forum at the beginning of the meeting on the twenty-seventh, whether it's on this topic or any other topic, people are welcome to speak to the board about it. What we'll do is open the public forum that night, and we'll try and be specific.
It'll be specific.
Say hi, folks. If you have something to say about the truck exclusion, here's your chance.
I think I, I interpreted, usually when that happens, in the way it was approached, I figured it was an agenda.
Right, and it's not, because it's, but it will be an agenda item on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I thought you guys were going down, and then you were going to say, okay, well, now, we're here for-
Well, at least it wasn't a terribly long meeting that you said.
Would there be people from the state to discuss the issues with, the size of the streets, or anything like that?
No, because the state's not doing that, we should, we will have people from Bridgewater that consulted they're using, that will be up here to do, they've already had talk with the board once, maybe a month or two ago, we'll do another presentation with that consultant from Bridgewater coming up here that night.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, John, they were here, like Charlie said, to his point about a month ago, presenting something, at that point, the board didn't, you know, didn't have any information or any input from anyone like yourself, or Mr. White, or whoever it may be, so, you know, hopefully-
Yeah, we just, we said, go, go, we, I guess we gave them permission to look into it, and then they came back.
You know, and talked-
Certainly sooner than I anticipated, they came back.
And talked to the track meeting and things like that.
Yeah.
So this, this, this whole packet was done by Bridgewater?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
And their interests are Bridgewater.
Well, except that-
But there are benefits to East Bridgewater, too.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things is, is you cannot do a truck exclusion at a town border, so for instance, if they wanted to close off Hayward Street, right at the town border, or in, you know, in High Street and such, they can't do that by themselves, but MassDOT wouldn't allow it in the first place, so it either has to be from, from East Street all the way through to Bridgewater and 104, or it's not happening, you can't, you can't do it on a town border, town border basis.
Did you want to say something? You got a look on you.
Yeah, I was gonna, well, I was just gonna wait till the twenty-seventh, but I was actually coming back down 106 last night, and there was like a seven-car accident on Whitman and Plymouth.
I know.
So, then I was like, I should probably go tonight, and, yeah, I mean, the stats were in there, so, I'm not entirely sure, I didn't do enough research yet, but I'm not entirely sure what the Bridgewater reasoning is for pushing it, but it seems like with